This is Commissioner Steve Schwalbe. I now call the order. The February 19, 2025 Island County Planning Commission meeting is now six o'clock, or just a little bit after. These proceedings will be recorded and made available to the public on our website. First off, we'll take a roll call by district. District one?
Margaret Anderson, District one.
Hi, this is Lyndon, District one.
And Bill Criswell is absent. District two?
Julie Jackson, District two.
Darren Hand, District two.
And Steve, oh.
You're right, Steve Bristow, District two.
And District three?
Fred Keega, District three.
Paul McCoslin is absent, and Steve Schwalbe, District three. So we have a quorum, and we can continue. Next up is approval of minutes from February 5th meeting, two weeks ago. Any comments or questions?
I move we approve the minutes.
I have a motion approved. Have a second. All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand. All right. Oppose? Okay.
Darren Hand has to abstain, I was not present.
Thank you, Darren. Minutes have been approved. Next up is public comment. We'll be taking testimony from all those present in the room and online. With those present, having priority, wishing to comment on items of today's agenda. The public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting will be your only opportunity to comment on today's session. Today's agenda includes workshop items and not open for public participation. We have one sign. Wow, all these people. Okay. Before making your comment, please state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to less than three minutes. Okay. Who's up? Thank you. Kiki?
Good evening, Commissioners and planning staff, and all of the participants in the audience. My name is Kiki Laporta. I live at 5965 Sundown Lane in Freeland. I'm a member of Woodby Climate Action. Many of our members are here in the audience today, and we have many more online participating in these proceedings that are so important to our county. I would like to commend you, our county, and our state for creating the opportunity for community-based organizations to comment in an organized way and seek input from the public on what you are working on now that will affect us for a long time. And I especially want to commend ARCIC, Island Roots Housing, and WEN, Woodby Environmental Action Network, for their work and their clarity in exposing the wishes and ideas of the people. Lastly, I would say I'm looking forward to these presentations. I'm very much looking forward to your questions and your participation in the process based on the public input that you received. And I remind you all, climate is in everything. Everything that you do comes from or affects climate. Everything is changing. Climate is affecting housing. It's affecting our shorelines. It's affecting our forests and our air and our water. And you know that, but we are also very, very cognizant, and we count on you to make decisions that support the future well-being and vitality of our island. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiki. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to make a comment? Okay?
I would like to make a comment.
And now we are online. Is there anybody online that would like to make a comment?
Yes, please.
How about, what about Dean? Okay?
Dean would like to make a comment.
Okay, Dean.
I sent you all a letter, my concerns about the Clinton sewer as that relates to making a functional IGA, excuse me, UGA within Freeland. So I'm not going to go into the detail about that. But I just wanted to say, as being a person who was involved in bringing a comp plan to the county back in the 90s, which was finalized in 98, the primary reason we did that, it was tremendous citizen involvement. It spent three or four years doing it. But the primary reason was that we did not want the continued expansion of growth, of new growth into the rural areas. We were losing our rural character. The rural character was the main reason we were doing that. So I guess I'm just a little bit disappointed in that here we are, twenty-some years later after that, and still, in three areas of the county, there's about about eighty percent of the new growth occurs in the rural areas of those counties. Those three areas of Central Woodby, Comeno, and where I live, South Woodby. So we have eighty percent of the new people coming into the county in South Woodby, going into the rural areas. Well, that is the opposite of what the growth management had had in mind. And we knew all that back in 98 when we did that. So we created a Freeland NMUGA, Non-Municipal Urban Growth Area, to accept that growth. Well, in the twenty years since we did all that, I've seen absent one kind of a multifamily sort of thing occur there. The reason is quite obvious, there's no sewer. So the one comment in the letter that I sent you is, I think you, the county, should consider doing a sewer. And the reason it was stopped before it got far too expensive is because they tried to sewerize the entire boundary of the urban growth area. Well, that's far too expensive. We can't afford that as a small one. However, in about 2007, I think it was, they did the Maple Ridge Retirement Center there, and they put in a small, they called it the Main Street Sewer. So it's operated very well since then. And they could put in, somebody could put in a small sewer like that, which would allow residential development, multifamily, which we need to occur in Freeland. So I just wanted to emphasize that that is an approach you should take. The Clinton Water and Sewer District does not have the bandwidth to do a project like that. It would be up to the county to do something like that. And I sent you a follow-on, a couple links of some funding that is available to do such a thing. So just imagine that the county created a sewer and went in conjunction with a private developer, or sold the whole thing to him, that he could put in multifamily, because we need multifamily there in Freeland. And so that's just the comment that I wanted to make, and I certainly hope you'll go in that direction. Because, you know, we're defining the the Washington State Growth Management Act by having all this growth occurring in the rural area. That's the very definition of sprawl. It's increased density in the rural area. And you can try and hide that fact a little bit by looking at the whole county and lumping it all as one, because there's a lot of growth occurring in Oak Harbor, the city of Oak Harbor. But, you know, Oak Harbor's thirty miles from the South End, and I think you should look at each area individually. So some of this probably is, it seems kind of esoteric to some people, but I'm I'm sure the planning department is aware of these idiosyncrasies. So I would just encourage that we bite the bullet, we're going to be talking about this forever, of growth sprawl occurring in the rural area. At some time, we got to bite the bullet and do something about it, and I would encourage the county, maybe they're the entity to undertake that thing. So thank you very much, and I hope I board everybody. Yeah, bye.
Thank you. All right. Wasn't Joe? Joe, are you ready? Okay, Joe, you're up.
Thank you. I can't turn on my video, but I'm sorry about that. The user stopped, I'm getting blocked turning on my video, so I'll try to be brief. I understand tonight you're going to get a presentation that supposedly jet noise is a problem. Well, I looked at the survey, and the survey was mainly spread around by one hard-working special interest group in Ween. They worked really hard to control the survey size, and that's how come they got the numbers they got. And I think had more people responded in Oak Harbor, and more people responded to Comeno Island, and understood that jets equal jobs, understood that jet noise is a sound of freedom, understood that if NIS would be, was to go away, or if it dramatically cut, it would impact the ability of the county government and the state government to provide services to people. And one last kicker, if it wasn't for Olaf Coopville, I hypothesize, and I hope I'm a little wrong about this, that the housing crisis would swallow up Central Woodby Island. There's a huge demand for homes, and any buildable land is literally being commandeered. And without the sweetness of VA-18G growlers at Olaf Coopville, there would be a real risk of more housing development. So I hope people who support the reserves support Olaf Coopville and vice versa. And if not, oh, well. I think I've said my piece, and I appreciate you giving me the time to speak. Thank you for your public service.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Next up, Marlon?
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, you're up.
Okay. Uh. Can you hear me at this point?
Yes.
Okay. Edane, on behalf of Woodby Environmental Action Network, I have been doing some detailed review of the Clinton Subarea Plan. And I echo some of what Deanie Now had to say. My problem right now, and I'll be giving you a fairly detailed report, and the county commissioners as well. The Clinton Subarea Plan, as currently constituted, it is a draft, and one hopes that it is an extremely early draft. It is, the information is flat-out incorrect. I keep finding, aside from, yes, I am an inveterate editor, and I can't stand the copy edit problems, but what I'm finding is factual errors. Number of units of a particular housing type misrepresented. Locations of critical areas misrepresented. As I say, I will be submitting a fairly detailed critique, but I expect better than this out of the county's consultants, and I don't believe that you will be able to rely on this document to do your planning, because it is so terribly inaccurate. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else online? Okay, then. Let's move to the director's report.
All right, thank you.
Emily?
Emily Neff, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development. I have two updates for the Planning Commission tonight. The first one is that the Clinton Subarea Plan has been published for review and comments. It is a draft, and we are welcoming comments. We have an open house planned next week on February 24th at the Clinton Community Hall from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and then we will give a presentation to the community council at 6:15. So please join if you would like to hear more there. And then my second update for the Planning Commission is that we got really good feedback from our last meeting that we did all remote. And so we would like to hear from the Planning Commissioners tonight about an option of going more remote. So the proposal that's been put forward is to do one quarterly meeting in person, and then the rest of the time have remote public meetings. I have run this by our board staff, and they said as long as the meetings are noticed properly, that will comply with the Public Meetings Act. And so we'd like to hear quickly, hopefully, from the Planning Commissioners if they support this proposal.
What about the other two?
You want to go one at a time? I think we should go one at a time, instead of an overwhelming. No?
Because you want to balance, want to do the pros and cons to compare, you're just doing one.
Okay, so the second.
They might vote on that one, and then hear number three, and go, oh, no, I changed. So let's put them all out there.
Okay, so the second option is to do the meetings all in person, but once a quarter meet remote, so kind of the reverse of that first option. And then the third option is to have our first meeting of the month in person, and the second meeting of the month remote. So kind of a hybrid half-and-half approach.
Okay, I'm like, I'm the champion of the first option, of having one in-person meeting every quarter, starting in February with our election of the chair and vice-chair meeting, and then every four months, we meet in person at the first meeting. And my motivation for that is primarily, well, I mean, the standard issues are time to drive, dark, bad weather, which is the reason we had all online a few weeks ago. But then we have representatives that live in Comeno, and that's a long drive. And so if we move it down, right now, Commissioner Keega doesn't usually attend this meeting, but if we moved it to just four times a year, the odds are a lot better that he will show up in person at least a few times a year, which would make me very happy. So that's my position on the first option.
Oh, I'd like, this is Anderson. I'd like to hear from both Darren Hand and Commissioner Keega. There are three options that we're looking at. Perhaps there are other options that we just haven't articulated. The one is that, well, I guess there's four. One is there's no change. And then one is that every quarter, we have only one in-person meeting. And that would have to give preference to any public comment meeting on a vote taken, correct? Not just a workshop, as tonight is a workshop.
Yes, tonight is a workshop. We would be allowed to still hold an online-only public hearing, if that's what you are asking.
I see. Yes, so we can do a public, thank you. So once a quarter, we meet in person. Second option, once a quarter, we meet online only. And the other option is we have two meetings every month. And so one of those meetings is in person, and one of those meetings is online. So Fred, Darren, I appreciate that we often do things in the room that are difficult when you're online, but I don't see that either one of you have ever had any problems raising your hand and making comment. Would you please comment on the three options, or the four options? No change, quarterly online, quarterly in person, or every other meeting is in person?
Oh.
Fred, you're muted.
Fred, would you like me to go first, or do you want to go? You have the furthest to drive.
And Darren, if you don't mind, would you turn your camera on, please? So we can see your smiling face?
Hello.
Thank you.
Hello, Darren Hand.
Sure, I'll go, Commissioner Hand. Commissioner Keega, my preference would be the status quo, the fourth option. However, I understand the desire to occasionally get together, and you know, and that way, I can also, when I do attend in person, I can see the non-verbal cues that my fellow commissioners represent as well, as part of our communication style. But at the same time, you know, I'm not as young as I used to be, and you know, I used to be able to drive long distances at both all hours of the day and night. And I find now, especially when I would be commuting during nighttime hours, occasionally, I do get glare in my vision, and it makes it difficult for me to navigate responsibly and safely. So, and, you know, that, when you, if I do the computation, I think the commute will be about three and a half hours, three forty-five, between three and a half and three quarters hours round trip, in addition to another two hours of commission meeting, and maybe another two hours of prep. That adds up, and I also have another commission board that I am on with Island County as well. And so that, it will start to encroach upon, you know, my availability and ability to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
I'll just echo Fred's comments. I think it was about the month of October when we start to see the daylight hours wane, and the dark hours kind of wax. And I, too, am starting to feel some of those onsets of age where the glare and the nighttime commute, even though I don't have as long of a commute as Fred, my colleague, I do have a commute. And in the wintertime, it does make it for a little bit more difficult for me to navigate. So that's why during these months, I try to do this from home. That said, my college has also kind of very much gone towards this type of meeting. In fact, just to share a brief note really quick, my main campus is in Columbia, Missouri, and they like to have meetings at 8:00 a.m. their time, which is 6:00 a.m. my time. So that means I'm on Zoom meetings like this with the entire college at 6:00 a.m. my time. So I'm very well-versed in using Zoom, very well-versed in keeping the camera on, watching for the cues and the hand raises. So this has kind of become the norm for me. So I would say that I agree with, I'm very comfortable with what, I will support whatever we decide. I'm very comfortable using Zoom, but I'm also, I acknowledge the importance of being able to see my colleagues in person, being able to see everybody, like for tonight, that's in person in the room, identifying the body language, so I see the bonus in that, and I would not want to give that up. And I'll just lastly say that as our hours, daylight hours, start to increase, you can be assured that I plan on being there personally more and more.
Thank you. How about a room discussion?
Can I interrupt briefly? We have a very packed agenda tonight. I was already kind of hesitant to bring this item up, because we didn't have a lot of time. So if it sounds like we need more discussion, I would kindly ask that we bump it to the next meeting, if it sounds like there's a lot more that needs to be discussed tonight.
Could I make a comment also, please? I think there's still another option that we could possibly do a meeting like this, one of the two nights, if we have two meetings a month, that the second meeting, that we meet by district, and we try to, and we meet in a location at each of our districts that's close by, and it gives a place and a time that we could have public comment as well, and have more participation with our peers in our districts, where it's really a major commitment for anybody to come and do any kind of testimony here for us to talk about any of our subjects. And we could do second meeting in the format that we've been doing it. And as far as staffing, if we had one staff member, you've got three generally available that come to our meetings. So if we had a rotation of one of those that came to our meetings, I know it's a whole lot different, but I'm thinking that we have different technology, and I really appreciate the in-person meetings, but I also work until 5:00 and beat feet to get up here by 6:00. And I prefer being here versus online. So it's just another option, since we may have more consideration later, that I'd like to add that to the mix.
We'll have to pass.
Okay.
We'll bump it until next time.
Thank you for that.
Yep.
All right. So we're going to move on to the workshop.
Workshop.
So we're going to invite Marnie Jackson to the table from Woodby Environmental Action Network to give her presentation, and bring up the slides here.
Thank you.
Before you take it away, I'm going to give a little intro. I think I did this at the last meeting, too, but just wanted to kick it off in the same way. So this year was the first year that the Department of Commerce offered grants to community-based organizations to help counties with their comp plan outreach. And there are four groups that were awarded money, three under a consortium, so we are hearing from those three tonight. And to the Planning Commission, I would ask that you, you know, listen to their recommendations and the work that they've done, and to ask clarifying questions. You don't need to weigh in on the recommendations tonight. You'll have time to do that at a later session, but tonight is, you know, information gathering and learning for you. Each group has thirty minutes. And please keep your questions until the end of the presentations, if we could let them finish their presentations, and then ask questions. That would be very helpful. Get this in presentation mode for PDF. Receive a PowerPoint version of this. I'm not sure it'll go in. Is this acceptable, and I'll just go through the slides?
That'll be all right, thanks. I'm sorry, I didn't provide a different format.
That's okay.
All right, thank you. So I'm Marnie Jackson. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Executive Director of Woodby Environmental Action Network. And as was mentioned by Ms. Neff, I am also a member of a consortium. Our organizations include Woodby Environmental Action Network, the Agricultural Resources Committee of Island County, Island Roots Housing, and Goosefoot as our fiscal sponsor. And so this surveying project, upon which I plan to report, was part of what was funded by Climate Commitment Act funding from Washington State's Department of Commerce. Next slide, please. So some lessons from our consortium work. We've really found that although we're working from different perspectives, we have common goals. And in the work, we've found that weaving interconnected issues, priorities, needs, and solutions finds us really with a lot of shared goals, shared priorities, shared perspectives, even though our lenses are three distinct areas. We've learned that we need to do more to seek diverse and historically marginalized perspectives. And that's really at the heart of the purpose of this grant funding, is to bring voices that aren't typically at the table with decision-makers, or represented among decision-makers, into comprehensive planning. And we're looking for things where we can say yes and. So rather than hearing blocking concern from one another, we hear a concern that might require a little creative ingenuity or more collaborative work to see the way through. And we've found that the process itself is a product, that we're growing understanding, fluency with policy language, and the kind of trust that allows us to be a community that plans together for greater resilience. Next slide, please. This, the lessons from our surveyed community. Our survey wasn't really designed for an in-depth or expert analysis of environmental science or land use issues. It was really designed to take the temperature of a wide variety of community members. As was mentioned by one of the commenters tonight, some of the community members who took the survey are identified as Ween members or environmentalists. But as you'll see on a later slide, fewer than half of respondents heard about the survey from my organization. So I really think that there are also some more general perspectives represented here. There are a couple other aspects of our consortium work that we'd really love to report on for you. And given the timing of our preparation for tonight's presentation, and the deliverables from some of our contractors, we don't have a full presentation on some aspects of what we're achieving together. But I would just like to thank Consultant Diana Sandoval, who has been reviewing both the 2016 comprehensive plan, and will be reviewing draft elements as they come out. And that's specifically with an eye to that lens of equity, where we have an opportunity to strengthen our commitment to equitable planning for all. And then Consultant Mary Elizabeth Heims, and her subcontractor Maria Diaz, have helped us reach and understand perspectives from some Black, Indigenous, and people of color community members. And we do have some survey data from both of those, the Mary Elizabeth and Maria, and we'd love to share that with you at another time. So if it's possible to present again, we'd appreciate it. If not, we'll be sure to correspond via email. So this has been and is indigenous land for uncountable generations, past, present, and future. So the map on the left is a photo I took at the Heebub Cultural Center. The Heebub Cultural Center is over at the Tulare Tribes near Marysville. And I just want to acknowledge that this island is home to Lower Skagit and Snohomish peoples, people who've lived in interdependence with other than human life, with land and sea for uncountable generations. And I wanted to point out that human stewardship of and interdependence with this land has shaped the landscape since before history, and it continues to do so for better or for worse. Billy Frank Jr. of the Nisqually Tribe famously said, quote, "I don't believe in magic. I believe in the sun and the stars, the water, the tides, the floods, the owls, the hawks flying, the river running, the wind talking. Their measurements, they tell us how healthy things are, how healthy we are, because we and they are the same. That's what I believe in. Those who learn to listen to the world that sustains them can hear the message brought forth by the salmon." So I want to acknowledge the Lower Skagit Snohomish Peoples, the Swinamish, Stillakwamish, and Sukwamish communities, speakers of the Shitseed language of families, for all they've done to shape this place that we call home. Next slide. Respondents learned of this survey opportunity forty-two percent or just under forty-two percent from Wynn, about twelve percent from Island County. Thank you for sharing the opportunity to participate in one of your newsletters. And about forty-six percent from other sources. So that may have been a press release that we shared with the newspaper. Or there was some flyering that was done by other community members. Next slide. Thank you. So there were a number of potential issues of concern on the survey. And as you can see, a great number of participants were either very or somewhat concerned with each of these issues. Groundwater contamination, habitat decline, aquifer recharge, and wetland loss all had scores of greater than nine out of ten respondents were very or somewhat concerned. And then going down the list, you can see that even at the lower end of concern, greater than three quarters of respondents were very or somewhat concerned. That one number that's off the chart at the bottom right there is seventy-five point eight five percent of respondents were very or somewhat concerned with logging. Next slide, please. Some areas with the strongest very concerned response, so leaving out that somewhat concerned. Over three quarters were very concerned about groundwater contamination. Almost seventy percent are very concerned about habitat decline. And over sixty percent are very concerned about both growler noise and wetland loss. And measuring in at over half, almost fifty-nine percent very concerned about aquifer recharge, and almost fifty-six percent very concerned about stream health. So it's notable that zero respondents selected not at all concerned about stream health. Every single respondent had some level of concern. And I actually venture a guess that Island County can take credit for bringing attention to stream health to the public. And if you want to go to the next slide, concerns about stream health were discussed in detail in this room by county commissioners and the health department staff, health department staff at a March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four work session. So thank you for successfully educating the public about this out-of-balance aspect of ecosystem of ecosystem care. So I linked to that report from Island County. And I wanted to share a quote from Commissioner Melanie Bacon. What she said at the time ties into what we're doing today. She shared, "The data are pretty horrifying. This is saying we have as many bad as we have good. And so it seems to me this is something we should be addressing in our comp plan." And that is from a quote in the Would Be News Times on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Next slide, please. So opportunities in stream and wetland protection. After seeing the Clinton Subarea Element Draft, I wondered about what improving mapping would mean for our potential to protect streams and wetlands. Because I found a sentence in that draft which said, quote, "Due to the relatively limited presence of wetland areas within Clinton, they do not pose much of an impact to future growth." And I just wondered if that comment, that statement has been ground-truthed against the actual wetlands as they can be witnessed, or the wetlands that are marked in the wetland delineations that are already on file with the county for every relevant past permit application. So we can't adequately protect what we don't discover or document. So I'm excited about how the community's value around stream protection can be well-served by improving maps before acting on such an assumption. I won't take the time to touch on every bullet point here, but I will address one. The first bullet point, enforcing critical areas ordinances. It's so important. I could devote hours to its discussion. But at this point, it's it's sad but true that our county is under-resourced and under-active on enforcing the regulations that are already in place. And so all this work to improve and make better regulations to guide our work, it really comes to naught if we don't have sufficient means for our staff to do that work. And so I would really encourage the county to look at how we can have priorities laid out in this comprehensive plan that says we clarify procedures for consistent and fair application of our policies. We have staff receiving consistent and thorough onboarding, training, mentorship, and ongoing professional development. We have staff adequately resourced to handle the volume and complexity of the work being done. And when it comes to mitigation, that we only grant exceptions to the rules of protecting environmentally sensitive sensitive lands when we can staff up to ensure that those exceptions are more than adequately mitigated. Next slide, please. Thank you. So a very high priority for respondents to this survey was preservation of wildlife corridors and habitats. Improving landscape connectivity while we still can, protecting areas adjacent to state parks and conservation parcels, for instance, is a limited opportunity where the window is closing. And I also want to draw your attention to the relatively low level of interest from survey respondents to expanding public access to rural green spaces. And the much, much lower interest of expanding public access to urban and suburban green spaces. And I actually think that this is not an indication that urban green spaces are less important, but an indication that urban dwellers were less represented among survey respondents. Because on one of our earlier slides, I shared the data around who responded, and I didn't draw it to your attention, but I'll draw it now. It's worth noting that thirty-one percent came from Coopville, nineteen percent from Langley, and this is by zip code, so it includes outer, and only twelve percent from Oak Harbor, with ten percent from Freeland, ten percent from Clinton, and only four percent from Cameno and Green Bank. So I would just like to point out that the people best able to benefit from an urban, pardon me, an urban green space are represented very likely by twelve percent or fewer of these survey respondents. Next slide, please. Forests were identified by survey respondents as the ecosystem in the highest need of increased protection. Wetlands were also identified as in high need by one in four respondents and shorelines by one in five. This was a hard question to write and a hard one to answer because these are not distinct and separate. The health of one ties to the health of another. Actions that protect one impact another. And so just as an example, a forested wetland or the impact of upstream logging on water quality and habitat downstream downstream translates to either ill health or good health for all. Next slide, please. So forests and aquifer protection were identified by survey respondents as high values. And some opportunities in these areas have already been identified by Island County. I know that reforming the public benefit rating system is already on the twenty twenty-five work plan for commissioners and I'm and our staff. I'm really excited about that. And I hope that that discussion also allows some room for a broader discussion of the program beyond just forests as well as forests beyond just PBRS. Right now, logging and conversion of timberland is a major forest health challenge. And septic capacity and coastal inundation of septic systems are aquifer health challenges. So I know that discussions are already underway about how to protect our county's public health around the subject question. And I just feel like around the logging question, maybe we need to forefront our the areas where we have conflict with the Department of Natural Resources at the state level and the where the areas where we have power as a county to make decisions about protecting our own critical areas. So one example of this would be when somebody with a rural forest parcel gets a class-three logging logging permit from the Department of Natural Resources of Washington State. They can log to that standard, which does not subject them to as many critical areas ordinances as our own county code does. And then they can apply to Island County to have the development moratorium lifted and convert to residential use. So there's an opportunity here where Island County could end this practice by upholding or even lengthening the development moratorium, upholding it without fail, which would mean that those who do wish to convert to residential use would need to do so in good faith by applying for the proper class-four conversion permit and then do the appropriate and healthy forest practices during their logging practice. Next slide, please. Requiring low-impact development and drainage plans for all new construction was a preferred strategy marked very helpful by fifty-six point five percent of one hundred and ninety-nine respondents. So the community's interest in low-impact development nests very nicely with the need to improve wetland maps and improve protections in Clinton and Freeland for wetlands since both these areas are slated for growth. And using neighborhood-scale septic alternatives, as was mentioned by Dana Allen, his comment today, for densely developed communities, for wetland-adjacent communities, for coastal communities where tidal inundation is possible. These really combine very nicely with a wonderful proposal that we heard from a community member and former planner, Bill Pass, who offered a perspective on how critical areas, critical drainage area designation can yield a real shift in how we care for stormwater and shift from a stormwater-as-a-problem orientation to a water-as-recharge and wealth orientation. Next slide, please. So this word cloud is an extract of words submitted by community members in the short answer fields on the survey with the larger words indicating a higher frequency of mention. And you can see here that Deer Lagoon, wetlands, noise complaints, shorelines, and forests were all frequently named. Zooming out from specific places, the trend we see here is around opportunities to protect lands around state parks. There was a lot of expression of interest in state parks here, but they aren't really the county's responsibility. But there is the opportunity to think of them as part of contiguous habitat that overflows onto county land. And there's also an opportunity in roadside stewardship to restore native vegetation, to extend wildlife corridors down our roadways. And I'll mention the need to plan for the wetlands of the future as well as the wetlands of today. Places like Deer Lagoon and the Lower Max Mountain Valley are going to be affected by sea level rise. And as pointed out by the state in their standards for the climate resilience sub-element, these wetlands play an important role in climate mitigation. So Crockett Lake, Cultus Bay, Bayview, all of these places are going to change. And we need to proactively anticipate and plan for how human reactive, human activity can be proactive and treat these areas as climate resiliency buffers if they are cared for and as climate disasters if they are not. Next slide, please. These are some example questions from survey respondents. What process? Well, I'm not going to read them all. You have them on your screen, but these are only a small sampling. I will email you a more full account of survey responses. And I will share that it's worth noting that the majority of questions and comments that came in related to frustration with the environmental and public health impacts of growler noise. And as I shared, there's that slide that shows that about thirty percent of respondents are in Coopville. So there's a high chance that they're being directly impacted. So the question that arises is, what is within the county's realm of influence in terms of expecting the Navy to follow laws, protect public health, and be a good neighbor? Next slide, please. So some takeaways around strategies for greater engagement. We can look for common goals. Farmers, environmental advocates, and affordable affordable housing advocates share goals of enhancing community infrastructure to support health, increase resilience, and more equitably enhance the best qualities of our islands. And I've really appreciated the county's approach and the state's support to letting these voices come in together and bring more harmony to the planning process. Thank you. We continue to need to seek needed voices. Our laws, policies, and previous comprehensive plans in Island County and around the state have disproportionately been shaped by people with identities of privilege. Some voices are missing from the conversation. And right now, we have an environment where it feels even less safe for some people to participate in public processes. We need to host creative space. Our community has changed a lot since twenty sixteen and will continue to change. And circumstances, including climate change, require us to become more nimble, adaptive, regenerative, and interdependent. So as a consortium, we've already found that unless we create more space for wide-ranging and then deep conversations, we can't really come forward with a clear understanding and a policy direction. So somehow creating more abundance of time and energy for doing this deep work in an iterative fashion year over year instead of in short marathons might support us to have, if not the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan, perhaps the next iteration be truly a product of long, ongoing collaborative work. And the process is a product. Time, space, and thoughtful design for collaboration is in itself an exercise in being the kind of community we need, well-resourced, interconnected, and moving together toward a healthy future. Thank you. And now I'd love to take any questions.
This is Anderson. I just have a few clarification questions. How long was the survey made available?
The survey was posted in early January, and I compiled the results and shared them with planning at the tail end of the first week of February. So I would anticipate it was about five weeks.
About five weeks. And given the initial results of the sources of responses, what is your reaction to Coopville having basically a third of the responses and Oak Harbor, where our greatest population center is, having so few?
Right. I think honestly, I would attribute it part in part to our having been involved in the Not in Our Parks campaign some years ago where Wynn was involved in litigation about curtailing military activities that were unlawful on public land. And I think that there was interest in our organization and its work stemming from that campaign is one theory. Another theory is that there are some nonprofit organizations doing, I would say, mission-aligned work in Coopville, who probably spread the word about this survey. And then another factor that might weigh in is that this is the seat of government and the county shared this opportunity. And people who take an interest in the county's activities pay attention to Coopville, and some of them live in Coopville. Those are those are just theories. I can't substantiate them, but those are my guesses.
That's all I was asking for is your sense of this. Given that a recent article from your founder regarding Wynn and the community-based organization, the collaboration with Wynn, Island Roots Housing, Goosefoot, and a missing one.
Arcic, Agricultural Resources Committee.
Sorry, Mary. Arcic. Given that collaboration, do you feel that you have a a steady position in the community that would perhaps set aside or move forward from any previous judgmental ideas about Wynn's purpose?
Thank you for that question. I would say every organization, like every individual, has its fans and its detractors. And I think that Wynn has achieved remarkable things over forty years, almost forty. And I don't think it has achieved all of that through diplomacy. However, I've been in my role as executive director for nearly two years. And I will say that our founders celebrate my presence. And I think that with this chapter of Wynn's life, we have very intentionally become more collaborative and more more centered in a diplomatic approach to a diplomatic approach to collaborative problem-solving. And I also think that there have been episodes in Wayne's history where it has been maligned unfairly, sometimes fairly, but often unfairly, for being an obstacle to progress, when in fact, when it comes down to a decision in the court of law, our objections have usually been upheld. And I would say that by participating with our colleagues in the CBO Consortium and with planners at this early stage, we're hoping to get good policy written now so that later nobody has to sue anybody to get good policy fixed, or I should say, to get bad policy fixed.
That's a great position. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind, what are the next steps?
Oh, that's a great question. So I would really appreciate your hearing from my colleagues in the consortium tonight, and then your consideration of how and whether you might like to invite our three organizations back to co-present on this survey data from our BIPOC engagement and from our equity review. If it doesn't feel like it fits into an agenda, I would then ask you to invite our input via email, but I really feel it would be more enriching to share in person and hear your questions. And then I also wanted to let the community know that this survey stays open, and we'd love to continue to learn from the community. However, I don't think we're going to compile and report on survey data of this particular survey again. And then you'll probably be receiving from Wayne a sort of an element-by-element response as the drafts get released, and we're going to try to be as proactive as possible in sharing perspectives both before and after draft release so that there aren't any surprises. But I just feel like every opportunity to hear some expert perspectives from not just my group, not just my collaborators, but stakeholder groups all over the county who are doing good work, I just appreciate you creating as many channels as possible for hearing, hearing those voices.
Mr. Keegan, Commissioner Keegan has a question.
Thank you. Commissioner Keegan, and Marnie, I was somewhat, I guess, not disturbed, but amazed by the low response rate of three point seven percent from Comeno residents, and was wondering, is that because of the design of the outreach that the Comeno Island American Legion had a role as well in reaching out to Comeno residents?
You know, I'm, I'm not sure, and I shared your concern that that was a low number. I will say that our attempts to reach Comeno for a variety of purposes have come to lower results than we'd hoped. As an example, this weekend, we're offering a free training that is funded by this grant called Finding Your Civic Voice, and we're offering it on Comeno, and we've advertised it in the Crab Cracker, and we've had a community member flyering for us out there. But it remains hard for us to engage with Comeno residents as frequently and as well as we've done with Whidby Island residents. So I really appreciate your question, and I would really welcome the opportunity to think through how we can do better with our outreach next time.
I, I believe on part of your detailed information on the BIPOC survey results, there were zero respondents from all of Comeno. Is that correct?
I'd have to go back and look. I don't recall that exact line, but I will share my recollection of the account that I heard about reaching folks on Comeno was that a number of the people who our consultant tried to reach work in the agricultural sector. A number of them go to Stanwood or beyond for shopping or congregating or otherwise, being in places where they could be approached publicly to take a survey, and that the act of actually driving to someone's home or to their farm doesn't feel welcoming or appropriate or safe right now, given the climate, and that out of respect for people's privacy and right to feel safe and unaccosted, we didn't go so far as to try to reach people other than in places where they might publicly congregate.
Okay. I, I think this question is probably, probably going to come up with Commissioner St. Clair, who represents much, all of Comeno Island as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the questions. I'd like to do better in terms of understanding Comeno perspectives.
Are there any other comments, questions?
So Commissioner Bristow, so on this slide.
Yes.
Your lowest, the one that was off the chart, logging?
Yes.
This slide, highest concern, essentially forests. Why the deck?
Right. So that's a good question. I think we could do a lot of different kinds of meaning-making about that. I think one assumption is that there's appropriate and healthy timber practices that involve logging, like selective logging, selective harvest, and then there are unhealthy forest practices or illegal forest practices, like clearcutting without clearing a grading permit. And so if I were to extrapolate, I would say three-quarters of respondents see logging and notice it as part of what contributes to loss of forest, and one-quarter of respondents might recognize the importance of logging for its commercial value, for its economic value, and they might feel that it can be done in companionship with forest protection through a combination of, you know, programs that conserve certain parcels and that incentivize responsible logging on others.
And logging ties into about sixty or seventy percent of all your categories here in a, in a negative way, you know, I guess, you know, just with too much logging.
Right. Yeah, and I think it's, it's of note that Whidby Island has no, and Comeno Island neither have forests of commercial significance. That's already a decision that was made and clarified by a previous generation of county leadership. And the question really becomes, what forest practices are appropriate for a county of this type on a sole-source aquifer with these population pressures and these geographic constraints, you know, being fully bounded by water on every side? We're not like some of the mainland counties who have, you know, uncountable acres of forest just to our east, or in Western Washington, you might say, just to our west. But we have the unique boundary of the shoreline that constrains us to what we have is what we get. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, Danielle Bishop, ARCIC, presents on the agricultural recommendations. And I don't know who your partner's name is, I'm sorry.
Also, I'm just going to add, you do not have to speak directly into the microphone. I saw Marnie struggling a little. It will still pick it up for the overhead.
Okay. They do cut out in the room, but it doesn't do that online, so just ignore it, please. Introduce yourself and.
Oh, yeah, okay. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. We're part of the Agriculture Resources Committee of Island County, which is a group of farmers and food system activists and workers that aim to build a vibrant and resilient agricultural community and healthy food system. We're here today to represent the desired recommendations that dozens of Island County farmers have come together to support for the comprehensive plan. First, a quick intro of the two of us. My name is Annie Jespersen, and along with my husband Nathaniel Talbot, we are the co-owners of Deep Harvest Farm and Seeds in Freeland. We've run a business here on Whidby for the last fifteen years, where we sell organic vegetables through our local grocer, local outlets, and through a CSA, and we also have a seed company where we sell organic and heirloom seed varieties to regional nurseries and online. And I'm here with Danielle Bishop, who is the co-owner of EB Road Farm, a sixth-generation farm on the Coopville Prairie, which focuses on forage and grain crops. Danielle brings a wealth of relevant skills to this comprehensive plan process. She graduated from the University of Illinois with a degree in urban and regional planning. She worked for the city of Champaign, Illinois, as a city planner for five years. She worked at the Land Trust for almost fifteen, mostly in land protection, and she's currently working at the EB Road Farm, where she handles post-harvest production of wheat, which they mill into flour. So she's a real gem in this comprehensive plan process. We're lucky to have her. Tonight, we'll be sharing a bit about the state of agriculture in Island County, the process that we undertook to come to the recommendations, and then we'll share what a big part of the local farming community seeks in the comprehensive plan update. We'd appreciate if you save your questions till the end, as we have a lot to share. So farmers and their farms, oh, thanks. Farmers and their farms are clearly valued in Island County. People move to and visit our islands out of appreciation for our stunning rural character, our working historic farms, farmers' markets, farm stands, and our incredible food culture. Farms do so much to create and protect our island's natural beauty and our environmental health, all while supporting our local food system, community resilience, and emergency preparedness. Without farms, all Island County residents are more vulnerable to the environmental challenges of modern times. Knowing that economically viable farms are crucial to the stability of our community, we hope that the updated comp plan will help us address the challenges our local farms are facing in order to keep this way of life alive and well.
Thank you, Annie. We'll move on to the next slide, please. So we'd like to review some of the county agriculture data and trends first, because they, they tie in so strongly with our priorities and recommendations, and we will be referencing them throughout the presentation. This bar graph shows the number of farms in Island County over the last seventy years, broken out by their size. The distribution of farm sizes illustrates the saying, "The whole is greater than the sum of the parts," and shows that commercial farming in Island County over the last hundred-some years has always consisted of small and mid-sized farms, ranging from less than ten acres to more than five hundred. The diversity of farming extends beyond acreage to the types of products that are grown, raised, and sold, as well as to the markets to which the products are delivered. And then moving on to the next slide. This graph is really at the crux of many of the issues that farmers are facing in Island County and relates the most to our priorities and our recommendations. The inverse relationship between the value of farmland and the value of the agricultural products sold off that land is an uncoupling of an agrarian community. While at first glance, this, this would suggest that agriculture is no longer, and I'm going to use quotes here, "higher in best use," it does not reflect farming and farmland's intrinsic value to the county. This includes, and is by no means limited to, the value of the local food supply, protected ecosystems, and open space and scenic qualities. At the same time, while many farms run successful businesses, the overall outpacing of land values reflects one of the key challenges that farmers face. And moving on, thank you. Agriculture today represents a more than twenty million dollar industry in the county. Most farmers in Island County sell their products to the outlets that are shown here. We have a vibrant farming community because of the diversity of agriculture enterprises. Thirty different crops are grown throughout Island County, largely due to a long-growing season, a mild maritime climate, and prime and quality agricultural soils. The next slide. Some visual examples of what is grown and raised here in Island County. We have a lot of different fruits and vegetables. Next slide. Livestock and poultry. Next slide. Forage and grain crops. And next slide. Seed crops. Moving on to the next slide. So the staff at Washington State Department of Agriculture created this map for us to show the distribution of mapped cropland. While at a high level, forage crops and pasture appear to dominate the map, fruit and vegetable farms represent nearly a quarter of all farms, and livestock and poultry operations contribute to about seventy-five percent of agricultural revenue earned in the county. This, again, reinforces the concept that all of the agricultural sectors contribute to a greater system in unique ways and are often interdependent. The absence of any one sector would certainly be noticed. Next slide. So with, with this information, Annie's going to talk more about the process that we took.
So starting in the May, in May of last year, a subcommittee of ARCIC started reviewing the 2016 comp plan, looking for ways that the updated comp plan might better reflect the needs of Island County farmers today. And as you've heard, in July, we were, we were part of the grant that was received from the Washington Department of Commerce, which allowed us to contract with the American Farmland Trust. The Farmland Trust worked for us to review our 2016 comp plan, as well as comp plans of neighboring counties, to find ways that our comp plan update recommendations might be more supportive of local farmers' goals and needs. They also shared results of a survey they conducted with local farms to provide additional insights into farmers' operations, struggles, and goals. In December, we brought the outcomes of this process to a Farmer Town Hall event, which we hosted at the Nordic Hall. It was attended by around forty farmers from Whidby and Comeno, who all discussed and voted on the group's priorities and recommendations. Danielle is going to share with you the results of that process now.
Okay. So before going into the specific recommendations, I'd like to share the priorities that emerged from our work and how they really captured issues that are being faced in the farming community today. So starting with economic viability, at its core, commercial farms are businesses, and in order to be economically viable, farms must cover their costs, including land, capital, and that's also replacement of capital, higher labor, and pay taxes. Farms also need to have access to markets. On top of all of this, farms need to mitigate risks that are inherent to working with biological systems like weather, pests, and disease. Currently, economic viability is a great concern to farmers. In fact, it was at the very top of our priority ranking exercise. Challenges that farmers express include the storage, packaging, and processing of agricultural goods, access to markets, livestock processing, cost of production compared to market prices, equipment maintenance, and the availability of farm services and supplies. At the town hall meeting, farmers also responded very positively to the idea of having a formal county agricultural advisory committee, as well as an agricultural ombuds person to improve communication and support agriculture at the local government level. Participants at the town hall expressed challenges with land use regulations, permitting and fee structures, and other county-level regulations that are cost prohibitive or negatively impact farm viability. Farming is a very complex profession, and in Island County, we share a lot of the same challenges that farms across the country experience. These challenges and occupational stressors also set farming apart from many other professions and trades. The Penn State Ag Extension Office summarizes the farming profession well. On their website, they say, "From the outside, farming may seem like a job that everyone would want, because you get to be your own boss, enjoy the outdoors, be a land steward, and feed the world. However, farming is a stressful profession, and building and maintaining a farm operation comes at economic and mental costs. Farmers are exposed to situations that put their physical health, i.e. injuries, tractor accidents, and I would add biological and chemical and natural exposures, as well as mental health, divorce, alcohol, and I would add depression, at risk. External factors like changes in the climate, market fluctuations, rising input costs, and legislation are all additional challenges that farmers face that may affect their mental health." I share this because it describes so well the realities of farming and offers perspective for local leaders and decision-makers to consider when developing and implementing policy, code, and regulations that affect agriculture. While many of the factors and stressors that affect farmers and the viability of their farms are out of local government's control, having direct input from the farm community on the day-to-day county regulations is a practical way to ensure that farming continues to remain viable and a sustainable profession in Island County. As for housing, many farmers express concern that the need for housing that is available to and affordable for employees is important. The concern intersects with availability and costs of labor. Our needs are the same as the broader community when it comes to affordable housing, and like many of the other critical industries and services that are in the county, pay-for-agriculture employment tends to be low, and therefore, housing becomes either unaffordable or further away. For employers, this translates to unstable employment. Also, farmers are acutely aware that water, especially in Island County, is a finite resource. While dryland crops do very well in parts of the county, water is the lifeline for growing fruit and vegetables and raising livestock. While farms are users of water, they also help by the nature of their impervious surfaces with water conservation and aquifer recharge. And next slide. So before going into the details of our recommendations, I would like to preface that they were created because we recognize that agriculture is a significant part of Island County's history and continues to add value to the community. Local farms support food security and emergency preparedness. They support the local economy, offer open space benefits, and deliver ecological services. We think that agriculture-supported policies benefit everyone, and we encourage that in addition to developing these recommendations into policy, that the data and information we have provided as part of this process be incorporated into the plan's narrative to fully and accurately capture and define local agriculture. Our recommendations are organized by their elements, the related elements in the Our recommendations are organized by their elements, the related elements in the comprehensive plan. And so in the following slides, recommendations that are bold-faced are those that were ranked as the highest priority at the Farmer's Town Hall Meeting. Also, some of these recommendations might already exist in the current comprehensive plan or other county code. But we've included them to ensure they're still acknowledged and valued. So moving on to the next slide. Under the land use element. We recommend including an overarching goal to protect farmland and promote diverse agricultural activities. For both existing and beginning farmers. In the past plan, working farms were listed subordinate to rural character, and this should be flipped. We recommend that the policies that support this goal include. To create a county agriculture advisory committee that consists predominantly of farmers. Along with other agricultural stakeholders to advise on existing and proposed policy and regulations. Land use issues that impact agriculture and ways to maintain, enhance, and promote agriculture in the region, including agritourism. Also, to create an agricultural ombudsperson position in the county. They'll have credibility in the agricultural community to support farmers in the permitting process. Identify and propose solutions to barriers and support the Board of County Commissioners. Both the ombudsperson position and agricultural advisory committees do exist in Skagit, Snohomish, Wacan, Thurston, King, and San Juan Counties. We also propose to develop a strategic plan for farmland preservation and agriculture. With input from farmers and other stakeholders that identifies key farmland protection priorities. Incorporates innovative strategies to keep farmers on the land and their operations viable. And gives attention to protecting farms that may not be located in agriculturally zoned lands. We also propose to identify and address the need for farm worker housing. By exploring flexibility in zoning codes to allow for creative and innovative solutions. To affordable, long-term rental housing on and off farms. Also, to review Island County code for barriers to agritourism activities that support farmers in diversifying their income. As population growth occurs near agricultural operations in Island County. To continue to ensure that the right to farm laws are enforced and protect agricultural uses and activities from nuisance complaints. Next slide. Often, how we perceive agriculture directly impacts how policy regarding agriculture is formulated. And as farmers continue to face challenges related to economic viability. We have a huge opportunity to address these and find ways to improve the larger system. And we recommend that, um, resources are committed to advancing the recommendations in the comprehensive economic development strategy. That support agriculture, including investments in a meat processing facility, value-added processing facilities. Distribution centers, business support services, farmland protection, and regional collaboration. We also recommend developing a food system plan that addresses food security, emergency response, the local economy, and equitable access to local food. The plan should include an economic analysis that incorporates multiplier effects in the local economy. Draws connections between agricultural viability and maintaining land and farming. And complements the strategic plan for farmland preservation and agriculture that we referenced in the land use element. Next slide. Farmers are stewards of large swaths of natural resources. Stewardship of these resources continually evolves, driven by education, economics, and societal changes. The comprehensive plan provides an opportunity for forward-looking policies. That help farmers positively address natural resources challenges into the future. And we recommend policies that relate to continuing to coordinate with our local conservation districts. To support incentive-based approaches to environmental stewardship and provide farmers with the resources that they need to protect critical areas. We also propose coordinating the development of a proactive strategy that addresses further water availability. Seeking solutions to ensure adequate water for farms, fish, and communities. And next slide. And finally, farmers are on the front line of climate change. Farmers have already begun to feel the effects of shifting weather patterns. And at the same time, farms have many strengths and characteristics that allow them to contribute to mitigating the effects of climate change. We recommend that in this new element, the comprehensive plan includes a policy that recognizes the importance of supporting. And collaborating with organizations that can help farmers succeed in changing, in a changing environment. And help the county address climate resilience, something that benefits us all. And so recommended policy is shown here is that we have opportunities to collaborate with other organizations. That will allow farmers to access resources and technical assistance. Regarding regenerative farming practices that enhance carbon sequestration and soil health. Respond to changing weather patterns and recover from extreme weather events. And so with our next steps, I think Marnie excellently captured our involvement with our consortium. It's been a very positive experience to have conversations on where our values align. And so we look forward to continuing these conversations and bringing back other input. And any opportunity we have to continue that conversation is great.
Thanks, Danielle. So you've just heard what a large swath of the Island County farming community worries about and hopes for from county government. All of our asks are within the scope of what a comp plan can offer, and most are addressed in neighboring counties' comp plans. We feel our recommendations are thoughtful and attainable and most importantly, needed. To support the viability of farming in Island County, and we hope you feel the same. As we mentioned, a large part of being a resilient, food-secure, emergency-prepared community for all Island County residents rests in the hands of local farmers. When the county government makes decisions that promotes farmer viability, the results end up supporting the local environment and food system upon which all residents depend. Here, we have a special history as an agricultural community. But we need policies to support the current and next generations of farmers. I think we all desire that farming not only be a significant part of our past, but a meaningful part of Island County's future. So thanks so much for having us and for hearing our concerns. We really value the opportunity to, to be heard. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll go first. I have a few questions.
Sure.
The, uh, Amos Budsman and the advisory council, are they paid positions?
They are. And, well, I don't know about committee members. I think that's probably a volunteer board. But I will say, I just got back today from, uh, the Northwest Regional Ag Summit. That was hosted by the Northwest Agricultural Business Center. And met the county staff from Snohomish County, and they are paid employees by the county. It's two people and their full-time job is to communicate with farmers.
Yeah, that could be a challenge.
It could be a challenge, but this is a twenty-year plan and it might not happen overnight.
Who develops the strategic plan for the, for the farmland? Who develops that plan?
Um, the ones I've seen online are, I believe, official county plans. Um, sometimes they're done in coordination with economic development groups for those counties.
So the county planning department, uh-huh. What are the barriers to agr- agritourism? I wasn't clear on that.
I, I don't know if you want to tackle that one. But I, I think what it is, is it's more of that right now, a lot of farmers are feeling the pinch of a lack of access to markets. And thinking outside of the box and looking at different ways to bring revenue. And maybe the barriers aren't so well-defined, but. We have to think of new ways that whether it's U-PIC operations, um, events. And I know this is a, a hot topic, but offering events or offering experiences that bring more people to. Either purchasing value-added products, having, um, again, that the farm isn't just. Three people operating it, but it's bringing people to, to the farm.
Sometimes the process of just getting permits for special events is too laborious to warrant the event happening at all. And so, you know, just the navigating of the bureaucracy sometimes is a barrier. And other times it is rules around zoning that prohibits certain activities. You know, depending on where the farm is located. And so just helping farms to navigate what they can and cannot do to diversify their income is something that many farmers are expressing.
That's good. Thank you. That was good. Who develops the food security system plan?
I would say, let, my guesses would fall under public health, or it would be a county, um, process. I, there are a lot of USDA grants and other funding opportunities that can help fund it.
Okay. And an example, uh, or two of nuisance complaints?
I, this, I, I would say that this is a policy that is put in not because it's happening right now, but it's the, um, the threat that development pressure. Uh, because elsewhere in states where development starts encroaching upon farming operations, that it's a proactive. Policy to ensure that if nuisances come up, that we have something that safeguards agricultural interests.
Sometimes those nuisances involve noise complaints with hearing tractors too early or unsightly. Aspects of agricultural, you know, operations that residential communities don't appreciate seeing, but are parts of just having a working farm. And so those are the kinds of nuisances that we want to be protected because we need to be able to do our work within a certain timeframe.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you. That was good. Um, my, my last, uh, question is farm housing would be. For the, for the workers' house, yeah, farmer workers' housing. Are we, are we talking RVs?
We're talking just access to more affordable housing that is at the level that farm workers can afford. You know, whatever creative solutions, you know, the county can help us come up with for just more affordable housing, broad strokes. Um, because it's an issue for all the restaurants, it's, it's, it's an issue for us farmers. Um, and it prohibits us from having the workforces that we need to stay around.
Go ahead.
Frakiga has a.
Oh, Commissioner Akiga, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Um, is it Annie?
Annie and Danielle.
May, that may, um, uh, on the, um, materials that we received in, in advance for, uh, your presentation. There was an appendix B by the, uh, USDA. And it was for Island County, Washington. And if you look at direct revenues, um, minus direct expenses. Uh, you know, basically, it's, um, the farmers are basically, uh, you know, uh, in a negative position. But, um, the farm-related income seems to make them profitable. What is farm-related income?
That's a great question. I'm not sure if I know what that is.
Okay.
I'd have to look into that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, if, if you could find out that, you know, that, that, that would be of interest to me. Thanks.
Email with, um, Commissioner Akiga if you would like. Yeah, we're happy to dig into that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Bristow.
She wants the, the final word, I guess. The, uh, okay, so. In your conclusions or recommendation slide, you, you had an opening statement saying to, and, and I'm my words, not your words. Uh, to flip the roles of rural character versus farming character. Can you expand on that?
Yeah, I, I, this was, um, actually a recommendation that came to us from the American Farmland Trust. And so what their observation was, is that there's a lot of emphasis on scenery. And again, this, the rural lifestyle and the way of, um, you know, that not farmers, but other people enjoy the open spaces that our county has. And so the actual concept of working farmland kind of gets put in the background. And really, it's the working farmland that makes up our rural character. And so to not let that fall subordinate to other things.
You said to flip the role.
So.
Because we talk a lot about rural character.
Well, having working farmlands be the important thing that we're protecting.
And I, and I grew up in a farming community, so. But I'm, I guess I'm true, what is flipping the role mean?
I guess what I mean is that rather than having working farmland be subordinate to. Character and enjoyment for others that it's, it's the priorities that we're protecting working farmland.
If I can add, Danielle, I think what she's saying, correct me, is that. The reason why we have rural character in some of these places as, are because the farms are the character. And we want to protect the farms further so that the character continues to exist.
Thank you.
Yes, understood. Yeah. It's hard.
Sorry, so they're not mutually exclusive? Is that essentially what you're saying?
No, no, not at all.
Seemed to be that that was a competing interest is how you expressed it.
Oh, no. When you protect farms, you get rural character as a result. But the priority should be looking out for the farms and we all get the rural, rural character benefit when we do that. Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh.
I have some questions too, but go ahead. Go ahead. You like to get that last.
That's fine.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I had some questions about your organization as to the farms that you're representing. Because I'm thinking about the scale of a farm verse, and also organic versus more traditional. Uh, chemically based, basically, the large-scale farms. And, um, how many farms are being represented and would be represented on, um, something like this board you're talking about? And how much farmland is there in the county here compared, like, as far as a proportion to the other uses? You've got a lot of forest land and a lot of other type of open space and such, so. And I had a couple more too, but if you could start that, I'd be curious if you could talk about your organization.
Do you want to take a run at describing ARCC? Then I can get into maybe the.
Yeah, I mean, ARCC, uh, I mean, just with the two of us, we're representing very different farms, you know? My farm is ten acres and we are, you know, small-scale but very intensive seed and vegetable production. And Danielle, how big is your farm?
We're about six hundred acres. Um, in the past, we've been a combination of conventional and organic farming. We made the commitment last year to go one hundred percent organic. Um, our markets are a little bit different. We take crops off-island. We also sell locally. Um, we're not doing so much direct sales, so we have a little bit of a different economy.
And your need for housing is for farm workers on-site? Do you have?
Uh, that's not me personally, so I think this is where ARCC, we're, we're a group that's representing farmers. And what we're sharing tonight came from forty different farmers within the county. So we're trying to represent everybody's.
That's what I was curious about is.
Cause my, for me personally, my, our farm does not have housing needs.
What's the largest farm on the island? What's, like, they get way down to just an acre or two. So what's the largest farm on the island?
Uh, I couldn't tell you specifically. I know we're one of them. I'd say probably the next one can't be much bigger than us.
I, I think there's, actually, if we go back to that bar graph, um, from the very beginning, you'll see the breakdown of, actually of farms by size.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I did look at that. That's why I was curious as to what the needs would be and tried to understand. You know, whether, again, traditional versus the organic farming. And then there's the relationship also of WSU and you've got the extension services here that are in place already. Would that be something to be collaborating with, or would that be in addition to? And would it be part of the same department? Or what do you see as far as how the, this agricultural organization would be in? In relation to the other existing farming type, um, education and other exchanges that already exist and.
Oh, I don't think that the vision for the agricultural board is, you know, very rigid at this point. I think that we would take our cues from how other counties nearby have set them up. But the goal would be to be predominantly a voice of, of local farms and a diversity of them that's well-representing. You know, the proportionality of different size of farms. But, um, outside of that, you know, just, you know, folks from extension or the conservation district would be relevant potential stakeholders. But it would just be up to county staff and whoever else is advising on the construction of such a board to decide. How many people are on it and what percentage is farmers and who else, you know, has a voice in such a thing? Um, they look very different from county to county.
That's, I was curious if you had some idea what this county's kind of ratios were? Or what was expected to be accomplished through creating someone in this capacity? Just curious, I don't honestly, I'm not challenging it. I, I'm asking it as a real question.
Yeah, I think, I think the main goal is just to have the county be hearing from farmers more regularly and more directly. And so, um, the number of small farms versus big farms and who exactly is part of that board has yet to be determined. But we just feel that there needs to be a smoother line and more frequent line of communication between the local farmers and county staff. And this is an approach that many other counties have taken. Um, and so there's all kinds of advisory boards of all different sorts that the county, um, gets input from. And it kind of seems like we're a bit of an outlier, not having an agricultural advisory board at our county. And a lot of them have paid staff that are facilitating the communication. And so, um, I think it, I know it's a lot of things to look at, but we're also talking about a very long plan. We're not talking about all of these things being implemented tomorrow. We're just hoping that the county can have some vision to preserve. The livelihoods of our, the agricultural community long-term, and some of this is going to take some longer-term strategies.
Well, Central Woodby already has that, that overlay of the historical reserve there that a lot of it had to do with the farmland originally. So you've got a good start there with a way to preserve that interest. So, thank you. I appreciate your, go ahead.
Oh, I would just add that, um, having the opportunity to talk to someone who does this as their, their job at Snohomish County. Was really helpful today. And the one takeaway that I got was. She said, keep the agricultural advisory committee, if you can get one for your county, simple. It's really about communicating to the county and it's about supporting farmers. So it's not trying to cover everything. It's just, it's a simple communication tool. Um, and I, one thing that also impressed me was they have a very innovative project in the works right now to develop. Um, it's almost a hub that's a combination of a farmer's market, an incubator, uh, food processing, meat processing, processing, all-in-one. Um, it's almost a hub that's a combination of a farmer's market, an incubator, uh, food processing, meat processing, processing all in one. It's been in the works for a decade, but that's 10 years ago that they started. And it's because they had the foresight to get an agriculture advisory committee, to have someone working on this, to develop strategic plans, to do this strategically. And that was pretty impressive.
If I could add something really quick, um, part of the benefit to the county of having these community-based organizations is that they are doing some of the the legwork for us and getting this this opinion from groups that are sometimes hard to reach. I mean, farmers work very long days sometimes. Um, and then it's up to the county staff to then go back and work out, you know, the little little kinks in the the rope as we're going through this, the knots and coming up and we'll continue communicating with them. So I know you're you keep making comments about, um, cost of staff, but you can always propose it and have it be shot down 15 years down the line, but at least it's in the the plan for now.
Thank you.
Love to continue this conversation. I mean, it's an honor to be here and we have a lot more to say. I also just I feel very sensitive to Island Roots Housing and, um, the presentation that they have, so I don't want to dominate.
I I have. This is Anderson. I just have a couple of points. Um, in the, um, understanding of farmland, are you including the vineyards?
Yes.
Yes, good. Thank you. And so ecotourism, we have spent inordinate time to address events at farmland. And that includes vineyards, or it was focused on vineyards, but if it applies to all farmland, that would be wonderful.
Yep.
And so if you would please take a look at that code that's in place and see if it fits. And if it doesn't fit, where doesn't it fit?
Our group would happily spend time on that and getting some feedback.
Right.
Great. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. And then one other question. Did any of your 40-some farmers express that they would like to be able to um, close down their farm if that was the right choice for them? And then sell it to development or something else that's not farmland? Did and did that come up at all?
That hasn't come up, but that is something that is of major concern because farms are such land stewards. And, you know, it would be a real tragedy for all of these aims that we all have, you know, um, looking out for envi- uh, environmental concerns and our, you know, rural character and our food system, all of these things. If some of these big farms go for sale, um, it's going to be a tragedy on a on a large scale.
Yeah, it will be a tragedy, large or small.
Yeah.
But the it might be a reality.
For sure. It's it's and I would say it's a fear that do we get to the point where that's our last resort?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Next.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Okay, so our last presenter is our Island Roots Housing.
And I just want to say that we're happy to come back if you feel that you don't.
Oh, no, we're. No, we're good.
We can go over a little bit eight. We might lose Darren Hand. Sometimes we lose him, but otherwise we'll, the rest of us will stay, right?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Uh, I will.
I I won't leave if we lose it at a quorum. So.
No, we won't. We're we're fine.
As long as I possibly can, but, uh, real quick, since I'm online, I just want to echo Commissioner uh, Margaret's comments about ag and wineries and event centers.
So thank you, uh, very much for allowing us this time. I've already presented on a number of things regarding approach, so I may just sort of zoom through those things in the interest of time. Um, but we are here to talk about the findings and. Okay.
Brother.
All right, thank you. So I'm Rose Hughes from Island Roots Housing. Um, I also want to acknowledge Bristol Carter, who has been the main coordinator for our work in the CBO consortium for Island Roots Housing participation and supporting the other organizations as well. Um, so these are, uh, some a summary of findings and recommendations as of February 12th. Our, uh, we did, we have done a number of activities. We do also still have a survey open. So that's why we want to make sure to note that this, we try to cut things off and give you results as of that time. So, um, one thing that, uh, needs to be emphasized is that this work that we're doing is made possible by a grant that is funded through Washington's Climate Commitment Act. Um, and as our, as our colleagues have already said, it's really to increase public participation and bring new voices to this process. Um, in the process, though, we just really also want to stress, if you don't mind the next slide, um, why this collaboration has been so impactful and matters. Uh, our shared knowledge, sharing the knowledge as we go through this process has enhanced all of our comprehensive plan recommendations by integrating our diverse perspectives. Working together has bridged the gaps between sectors and plan elements, uh, ensuring more holistic uh, solutions being proposed. And the cooperation has led to greater community engagement and more inclusive planning recommendations. Next slide, please. Uh, in terms of Island Roots Housing, we are here representing a large group of housing organizations that we've been interacting with through this process. Um, we actually meet on a bi-monthly basis as what we're calling a housing resiliency group because it actually spans the whole gamut from emergency housing to homeownership in terms of the participation. And we had two meetings that were devoted to workshops on the housing element in December and in February. And IRH has also participated in two county-led cross-sector housing focus groups as well as a Cameno Island-specific workshop. Next slide, please. One of the, um, wonderful opportunities has been to focus specifically via the state mandate on outreach to BIPOC members of our community. Um, and as has been mentioned by our colleagues, this has involved direct engagement through manual surveys and also then making people aware of the digital surveys through key locations. Um, direct engagement and doing surveys on-site. Uh, also engaging in, uh, events where we went out to the communities um, to engage in with various folks. In the process, we have, uh, recognized challenges and insights. Um, one is the need for culturally relevant engagement strategies. What we found was there were a lot of people who actually were not aware of this process and had not had the opportunity to or not been aware of the opportunity to engage before. Um, the other are barriers to outreach efforts. So there are institutional policies like, um, churches who wouldn't allow us to just even leave flyers. Or, um, also there's the federal DEI hostility, which is having a chilling effect on public participation. And ICE-related concerns as mentioned before. Um, one of the things that you heard talked about a lot here is, um, some particular language. And we focused as a consortium on the these terms and how how they are connotated as opposed to denotated. And rural character and rural lifestyle are two of those things. One having a statutory definition and the other having just all sorts of associations that individuals bring to it. And that this actually can have an impact on people as they're engaging with comprehensive planning materials. Um, so to that end, I just want to say, as has been mentioned before, that Diana Sandoval will is working on a review of actual text uh, as another aspect of providing that input into the process. And so both the BIPOC survey results, as well as Island Roots Housing's survey results will be available to the planning, um, staff. Um, in terms of the BIPOC direct manual surveys, we just want to call out some of the housing demographics related to that. That survey spanned all three subjects that have been presented to you tonight. And, um, but we asked some specific questions around demographics for housing. So 95% of the people that we contacted with were housed. Um, 0% reported receiving any sort of housing assistance. No section aid or opportunity council programs or rent assistance. And there's a 48% homeownership rate of the respondents. Of those folks, 70% felt feel that they can afford to own and rent a home in Island County. So notably 30 don't, 30% don't. And 39% of the respondents have experienced housing insecurity. Thanks for knowing when I'm clicking ahead on my computer. Forgot to signal that. Um, so we just wanted to highlight two of the two of the response verbal, uh, textual responses that, um, came out of it. The one on the right really demonstrates that the input that we got was pretty typical. Um, both whether it was the BIPOC-specific survey or the broader survey. People want safe places for their kids to engage in healthy activity. Um, they want access to farms and farm stands year-round. They want lower utility bills and lower taxes. Um, but I also want to call your attention to the part on the left. And the perception of a north versus south, uh, experience on Whidby Island and then, of course, uh, Cameno Island, uh, being a whole different island. Um, so I'm just going to say this, uh, this quote out loud. For them to not create an economic border between north and south Whidby, housing growth and economic diversity and opportunity should be equitable across the island, not just the north. So in terms of the housing element-specific survey, uh, that we put out online, we had about, uh, over 225 individuals respond as of the cutoff date. And that included really doing outreach to, uh, community-based organizations to get their input, uh, of which we had more than 12 that spanned across advocacy, social services, housing, business, and environmental sectors.
On that previous slide, I know where I'm supposed to.
Your mic's not on.
Sorry, I, on this slide, uh, is that all from the BIPOC survey in terms of Maria Diaz and Maria Elizabeth?
No, this is the electronic survey that we did that was open for, um, for a month. So we did provide, once the surveys was an introduction, the BIPOC survey was an introduction in person to build relationship and trust for folks to then know that they could access this online. And then we also did outreach about the online survey to all of the other community-based organizations in the housing resiliency group and beyond.
All right, thank you.
And in addition, the county also advertised it. So, um, here you have the geographic spread of the survey respondents. Um, so a little bit broader spread than what you've what you saw in the other subject matter surveys. Uh, we specifically isolated Langley within city limits, so we can also, uh, provide them with information related to their comprehensive plan. And then in terms of age group, perhaps not surprisingly, we have about 50% over age 65. So our conclusion from this is that we now have to have specialized outreach to people under 65. Uh, the pressing housing challenges, we asked people, what do you believe is the most pressing housing challenge for Island How- uh, Island County? Um, and then you can see there, this is in order of importance to folks. So lack of availability and affordability for rental units across all income levels. Lack of housing for low-income households is the second most concern. Lack of availability of and affordability of homes for purchase. And then housing for seniors. And then the amount of homelessness that we are, people are experiencing. Um, the housing needs identified specifically called out emergency housing gaps, inadequate emergency shelters and support services. And then another thing that highlights, and there'll be another, um, slide about this, is the temporary housing solutions that people are coming up with on their own informally, including RVs that are currently being used as both transitional and permanent housing at a growing rate. And then housing for specific demographics. Um, so we did see a lot of overlap here and some common themes. Housing for temporary workers, farmworkers and seniors. And by that, I think we mean specifically housing that has accessibility as well as supportive services. Just want to remind you about the Island County workforce that a significant amount of the Island County workforce actually would qualify for subsidized of formerly affordable housing. And so we're talking about a broad diversity of people who work and make our community and our economy possible. We saw tremendous support for diverse housing types. 66% of the people said that the Island County needs more multifamily housing. Uh, second is senior, more senior housing. Accessible dwelling units are seen as a part of the solutions. Single-family housing, uh, more of that 37% was the rate for that. And then people did mention manufactured and mobile home parks as part of the solution. So we asked for input on growth strategies. Strong support for focusing growth in the UGAs over 80%. And 66% support for having growth focused in the raids and lammers. We did introduce the idea of planned residential developments that actually had a affordable housing component mandated within it. And we didn't get into a lot of detail about this. This was just sort of a trial balloon to see how that hit people just with the headline. And so we can see that there is a variety of respondents and that this is something that would need to be approached within probably some very specific parameters uh, in order to, um, and educate people about it in order to, uh, then rego-go back and regage their support. In terms of the perceived role for Island County, we asked people, you can see here in the next slide, the results. Um, but they're not quite readable. Uh, so if we go back one slide, uh, 70% felt that tax incentives, they supported the county providing tax incentives to build affordable housing, adopting zoning changes to encourage it and providing direct funding of affordable housing for about 60% of that, um, of those respondents. Then we have regulating short-term rentals and the preservation of existing naturally affordable housing. Um, providing information and programs for people to stay in homes through repairs, adaptations. And more community engagement in planning was seen as, uh, obviously something that they'd like to see the county support. If we can go to the next slide, emergency and transitional housing. 87% of the people agreed that current emergency housing services are inadequate. And they offered recommendations to expand shelter options and integrate the support services and to designate locations for temporary and transitional housing, including RV parks and modular housing. Next slide, please. So in terms of RVs, a recognition that these are already being used and can we daylight bring those into the daylight? Um, 71% of the people supported permitting RVs as temporary housing under certain conditions. And 67 supported actually having designated RV areas for transitional and emergency housing solutions, not just having one-off RVs on people's private property. Next slide. So here you can see it's over 67% of the people, um, saw that permitting in designated areas would help address homelessness and emergency housing needs. Next slide. In terms of the conditions that should apply, uh, 80, almost 88% said access to utility to to utilities, water, septic, electricity needed to be there. And then another 56% said subject to health and safety inspections. Um, and then the next most common, uh, concern was to have time-limited use. And it wasn't. And it wasn't specified. This is just an example, maximum six months. Next slide, please. As we've mentioned before, the legacy of housing exclusion through racially restrictive covenants needs to be acknowledged and it needs to be explored how that still affects us today. So 955 parcels with racial deed restrictions have been found to date in Island County, over 22 subdivisions with deed restricted covenants. And so not surprisingly, here is the map that I promised you the last time I was here. You can see that we do have some census tracts where we have integration and diversity. Our challenge now is to explore how we can, what what is different about those census tracts and how we can create more opportunities for greater residential distribution by race and ethnicity in other areas of the county. In terms of our BIPOC engagement, we found that 89% of the people were concerned about the future of housing in Island County and 12% have experienced housing discrimination. In our overall survey, we found that 8% of the two over 225 respondents cited discrimination as a housing barrier. And that probably roughly aligns with Island County demographics. And the recommendations are pretty straightforward and common sense. Increase representation of BIPOC and marginalized voices in planning processes. Strengthen policies against discrimination in rental and homeownership opportunities. And adopt goals and policies related to strengthening fair housing compliance. We also asked people about existing housing stock and how healthy they felt their housing stock was. And when you get the survey results, you'll see that it's actually quite a variety. There are a lot of people that are very well housed and feel that their housing is very healthy. But the the vintage of our housing stock has a real impact on housing precariousness. And I also want to call out the person who wonderfully said, why on earth would you assume everyone lives in a building? So housing stock is directly related to housing displacement, as we discussed before. And so I'm going to skip through this slide to just reemphasize that the state has given us a tool for mapping housing displacement and is encouraging us to actually take that base data and inform it with local knowledge. And I think what we're going to find is that housing displacement is actually a risk across the entire county. But it and it's more rather than geographic, it's based on our experiences. It's based more on circumstances in terms of the ownership of properties. So where we have the greatest risk of displacement is when we have people who are aging out of their ownership of rental units and those properties are sold and people lose their housing. Whether that's a small apartment building or whether or or whether it's a single-family detached home that's been made available for rent. So what we've identified here overall, just in summary, is systemic barriers to housing security and stability for our community and opportunities for how to address that. So on the right, we asked people to to really emphasize what they saw as the overarching comprehensive plan goals related to housing stability. Increase affordable housing development, number one with 81%. Provide rental assistance or subsidies, 62%. Improve access to housing support services. Promote inclusive housing policies. Implement stronger tenant protections. Limit short-term rentals and address regulatory barriers. So in terms of our next steps, what we're currently in process with is the, as we mentioned, the report regarding disparate racial and ethnic impacts. We are also writing our specific recommendations for Island County planning staff related to housing element goals and policies. And we are going to create continue to create public education products related to today's presentations and all the work that's being done. And now through the future of the summer of 2025, we will be reviewing draft housing element updates and providing public outreach regarding the draft updates and amplifying opportunities for public engagement. We have a few more slides that I'm that are about those recommendations, but I want to emphasize this next one rather than get into the weeds, which is about adopting core principles. Through this consortium, we've really found that there are course principles that can be translated across all elements, but they particularly matter in terms of the housing element. One is definitions matter, so we need to be precise in our policies because imprecise policies lead to much longer times to get permits and it provides more confusion and opportunities for discord within the community. The other is to preserve rural economic activity and spatial relationships, not subjective aesthetics when we are talking about rules, especially for affordable housing. A front porch doesn't make us have rural character. It's the rural activity and open spaces. Don't silo comp plan elements, although the state asks us to. We need to try to overcome that barrier to plan holistically. And we ask that you reward and encourage innovation in housing. That's really key. And to encourage cross-sector collaboration, because this is going to be a heavy, heavy lift, especially over the next several years. And we all need to be a part of it. We need to make sure that we're not preferencing one group over another in how we write our policies and how we do any form-based code or design standards. And then really allowing for diversity and flexibility in terms of type, tenure, location, programming, and most is the thing that makes it all possible, funding sources. So in terms of the next few slides, we just called out a few examples of how to turn this input into actual policies, but we actually have a very long, long list that we will be providing in writing. And I recognize now that it is 8 o'clock, so I'm just going to put an end to the presentation here. And if there are any questions and I'm, don't worry, we'll be back.
Is that okay?
I have just a quick question. Rose, in looking at the perceived role of the county, you talk, the number one 70% response was tax incentives, which are very hard to make happen because we need taxes to run all the other services.
Exactly.
Was there any discussion regarding any permitting incentives like housing modeling or permitting timelines being collapsed because you were using housing modeling?
In terms of, you mean, stock plans? We did not present that question. And while that question may be appropriate for single-family detached homes and ADUs, one, in terms of permanently affordable housing, it it really needs to be context site respondent responding, you know, through the the various affordable housing has a whole bunch of layers of regulations that we have to conform to. The state has evergreen sustainable building standards. And so it makes it a little hard to do stock plans of any kind because you really are supposed to take into account solar exposures and things like that. But it but the short answer was, we did not pose that question.
And and I would offer our good friends at the Opportunity Council have done modeling very well and not in this county that I'm aware of. And I keep looking back at our contact there. I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name, but you know, I think of Colshan Village where it's a land trust and the modeling of the housing at Colshan Village, the land trust and the whole piece of development, if you will, is multifamily housing and it's been replicated in in Watcom County at least. So maybe there's a way to bring that in and say, take a look at this.
Thank you.
If you will, please.
Thank you.
And then I have one other question. You talked about emergency and transitional housing. And I, you know, I'm sure we all felt badly around the cold weather and it even made it harder. But to have emergency and transitional housing, you need organizations that are willing to run them. Do you have any outreach or plans for outreach to organizations who who can actually adopt this?
We actually, I mean, those were the organizations that provided this input. So the Whidbey Homeless Coalition, the Opportunity Council, they were involved in providing input to these surveys. And I would say that there are complex challenges with creating more emergency housing. And we've seen that in some of the proposals that have been put forward. The scalability of that is something that I think we, as a community, need to address. And we'd be happy to go into more detail about that and and the recommendations related to that that in in at a further time, but absolutely.
So it sounds like we have growth space with the existing people, which is great. And just one more comment, you had many slides that were not in our package. And if you would, I'd like to see the full slide.
Yes, yes. So we did update this slide because we were still compiling information. So we actually have one, and then we simplified it for the sake of today's. So we actually have one where we've got more recommendations under each one of the goals that we can provide to you tomorrow. And and then you can distribute that one.
Thank you.
To answer your question, one organization that directly deals with homelessness is The Haven, just south of Coopville.
Right.
So if we could model that on a bigger scale, that would be outstanding.
If they're willing to take on more locations, that would be fabulous.
So I think there are lessons to be learned there regarding that process for permitting. And we can use those to improve the prospects for expanding our capacity for that type of housing. But there are also other types of emergency housing that have not been addressed, demographics that can't be served at The Haven. And so there are recommendations specifically about those as well.
Commissioner Jackson, so first, when I learned and was reading all of the preliminary paperwork that we received, I was so impressed about the collaboration and just really applaud that. That is a huge step in what I would call the right direction. And just a couple of comments. So thank you for bringing forward workforce. And what does that mean? One of the things in your slide specifically speaks to a family of four earning $61,000 a year. And in order to rent something, what the landlord will say is you cannot have more than 30% of your income go towards rent. That's 1,500 a month for a family of four. I don't know how many people can actually make that happen. Same and then earning 80% at $81,600 a year, that's 2,040 for a max payment. A two-bedroom, two-bath rent, at least in Oak Harbor, that's what you're looking at. So I just, I feel that's significant. I appreciate that you that you brought that up. And then just a couple of other quick things is the perceived role for county government on that slide. 56% were hoping for some regulation of short-term rentals. Was there a recommendation as far as how that would be implemented and how it could be regulated?
There were some ideas put forward. One idea that was put forward was to limit it to owners who are onsite.
Like full-time owners instead of.
Yeah, where it was their primary residence, I should, I think that would indicate where it's their primary residence.
Okay. And then providing information or programs to stay in homes, you know, there's so much education, there's so much that's out there that people just are not aware of. So I appreciated that as well. That's all. I won't take any more time.
Great. Just a quick comment, because we've been talking all evening about waste, actually not a lot about wastewater management. That's a big concern, though, for any type of either multifamily housing or for emergency housing that you have that. And then there's also the access of getting water and transportation. Those are all three major components to any of these housing solutions. And it's something that I'm sure is underlying everybody's concerns, but it's just to refocus because that's how we even started the meeting, was talking about the Growth Management Act and not going into rural areas and other issues about trying to manage our resources. So I think that I really commend you. This is one of the biggest issues we have in the United States, actually, the whole country. And I think we're a good example of it because we have a very polarized culture here. It's a lot of very extreme type residents here. So I thank you for your energies and for the others as well. It's pretty phenomenal to put all this work together and a lot of really hard subjects. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
I have one more comment before we close. And that is, I would profoundly like to thank Marnie and Ween, Danielle and Annie, and you, Rose, for Island Roots Housing, Annie and and Danielle for Arkic. And I know Miriam had a lot to do with that. Thank you. It's been quite a broad education. I think the the county's challenge is to take all of this input and somehow make it work because there's only so much buildable land and and our environment is so precious. And so I look forward to continuing this conversation with your input. And so my thanks. I'm sure I speak for everybody, so thank you very much. And with that, I move that we close the meeting.
Okay, so I, before we take a vote, I just want to also thank the participants online, at least those that stayed with us to the bitter end. Okay, so all those in favor say aye or raise your hands. Yeah, okay. We are done. See everyone in two weeks and thank you, everyone, for participating. Appreciate it.